All right, the flag please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Rokalvold, please.
Alderman Percy.
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Here.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Here.
Alderman Evans. You started at some place. Alderman Kerwin.
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Here.
Alderman Tudor.
Here.
Alderman, uh, it's Tudor.
Here.
All present, you are informed.
Thank you. My third regiment meeting, City Council on October 18th is now in session. Council got through the amendments for October 4th.
I see a correction that needs to be made on citizen comment where the skateboard park, I was approached by the park board, they stated that that person never did come and talk to them. It's the second line there. They would like to have the park board taken out of that because they were not contacted by the young lady.
Is that what?
She stated that she contacted the park board.
Yes, she said that she contacted the park board, the coalition, the wrestling club.
Well, we can't remove it.
You can't remove it.
Yeah, she stated it. Whether it's true or not, yeah, that's what we announced.
Okay. Should we change her name? I believe the name is wrong.
Yeah, it should be Chandler, shouldn't it?
Yeah. The last name should be Chandler.
I'll go look when I get home. Or is it Jackson? Could be Chandler or Jackson. She wants to work for Chandler. I'm not sure what you're going by.
I believe she looks like Chandler.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Does it matter?
I don't know. Anyway.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the city council meeting on October 4th with the proper corrections.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second. I second that. By Alderman Hall, Larry Hall, any discussion further? Rokalvold.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
She has two pass, motion passes.
Thank you. Mayor's support. Got one item to give with the recognition from the National Weather Service. Now, what I'd like to do is we have Mr. Rodriguez here, and I'd like to repeat the letter that he sent to Dennis in regards to being storm ready. Says, "On behalf of the Storm Ready Advisory Board, congratulations on Wilmington for being certified as a storm ready community. Your leadership and the progressive preparedness measures taken by Wilmington have been outstanding. Wilmington becomes the 74th storm ready community in Illinois. Wilmington has redundant methods of monitoring weather, receiving watches and warnings from the National Weather Service, and disseminating severe weather warnings throughout the community. Wilmington has also trained skywarned storm spotters, communications with the National Weather Service, educational outreach programs, and has written the Severe Weather Preparedness Plan and has conducted severe weather exercises. Wilmington has authorized a display of storm ready logo on official letterheads, brochures, and other official documentation." Also goes on to say, "If Wilmington participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, storm ready designation earns ISO community rating system points," which is always good, which I think we are a member of, so, uh, also, so again, congratulations. Wilmington has prototypes of your weather preparedness program, and is very deserving of this prestigious recognition, sincerely Stephen Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez happens to be here tonight and to make his presentation will come over here, and I might call on the gentleman for by SFS to come up here as well to receive the recognition.
Got some cool SFS shirts now, huh?
Thanks for having me. Like I said, my name is Stephen Rodriguez. I'm with the National Weather Service Chicago, I'm Romeo, Illinois. Here to recognize the efforts Wilmington has made to become storm ready. For those that aren't aware, storm ready is a National Weather Service program that helps communities arm themselves and put the safety and communication skills needed to help save lives before, during, and after severe weather. Their work has been tremendous towards reaching this goal, and like I said, I'm basically here to recognize their efforts, recognize the plans that they already had in place, and we just help solidify those already good plans in place to help the city of Wilmington stay safe. So, I'd like to get on behalf of the National Weather Service, like to congratulate the city of Wilmington on storm.
Okay, you guys are all smiling. Tighten up, Willman. Okay, there it is. Rokalvold. There we go.
I don't like that. You refuse to say it now, you need to. No laptops, very long.
Again, I'd like to thank Dennis and the rest of the guys who are there. You guys do a tremendous amount of work for the city that I think was largely unrecognized. Also, your work that you guys do, let's say the majority of it is pretty much voluntary work, and the things that you guys go through to ensure that the community is safe and ready in fact of these types of severe conditions, you guys are way above beyond what a lot of people do, and I know me personally, the rest of you guys, thank you for all the work that you guys do. All right, moving on. Just a notification that we got in finance contribution of the Chamber of Commerce to make those, the city will contribute up to $1,000, and that's not towards Christmas light decorations, this down town lighting, Christmas decorations. Lead bag service to give October 31st and run through November 25th. I know we get closer and stuff goes on there, very tense, I'll get it working, tell the schedule. We try to have a defined timeline, makes it easier for him for scheduling and every day else with his guys to try to work to get it. And I like to try to get to the city at least two times in their whole effort, so we go through that. Also, if you notice, it's last day, four yard waste pickup if you use the bags. Waste waste management is November 25th, and service reserves are in April 6th, 2017. Also make notice that October 22nd, for 9/11, is Wilmington police station's national drug kickback day. What's referred to as prescription medication into the national citizens encounter that you don't do anymore, you just kind of sit in there, find an opportunity to take those medications and take them to police stations and just hold them properly so they don't end up in areas where they're not supposed to. We all know prescription medication is just as much epidemic as the regular illegal. And, oh, that's it for the mayor's. Actually, I got two more today. Wilmington's Lions Club, you got the Lockwood Woods Outdoor School Night, October 21st to 22nd, seven to ten, want to get a little blood pressure up, a little excitement for your evening, walk through there. It's always a lot of fun. And also, for those who attended this past weekend, the Coalition's event in regards to the fundraiser, P-A night, it was great to see so many community people out there do that. Special kudos to Alderman Van Dyne for out there playing, he did very well considering.
Can I just add that those ambassadors were very good at basketball?
Yes, yes, they were.
It's been years since I've been on the court, but it was a lot of fun.
David gave him a 50-point bump. So, no, it was a good time, I know, but I think bottom line, you could see people who do the community, and also for those who played and directed, I know the importance of the coalition in general, but also what they really panning here this event to with raising funds for police P-A night, I think it was great, and I do those dollars for all.
And mayor, I believe we've had a couple donations other than that. I know Deconstruction made a very generous donation, and I know the Bernie Forest Council also made donations to our, and any other.
We got others coming. Yeah, so that's a big donation. Turk Kesseling is doing one. Tony Bender, Architects are doing one.
I want transport.
We're coming in on a further basis.
We should be able to get the chief of vehicle order for a long week.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Yeah, we're working on angles on that to minimize the cost, to maximize the donations.
So, that's all I have, so I do see next up are citizens comments, and I know Jerry had a presentation.
The COVID, they just asked me to thank people. People had to thank me or donated about church shirts, this is what we wore, something. And the ambassadors were so impressed, they wanted to make them shirts as well.
I see.
And they were very, very impressed with the high school. And they also asked me to thank the city, and told me, and all the persons that are out in the mountains, what you did, thank you to the police department for the guys that were helping, spent the place to go, they gave a team player, and he was getting challenged to do sit-ups, I mean, complete foot-ups, and the girl that passed through was about my size, sat on him, and he kept on doing it. And he's also really quick at snatching out three buckets of different.
She had asked me to do that. As part of the skit.
And after the first couple minutes of the score, you guys beat the Bears on Sunday season, because it was about 38-2.
All right, any other citizens comments tonight?
We lost that to begin, so you guys lost it to last.
All right, planning and zoning commission, the scheduled meeting is Thursday, October 20th, 5:00 PM, which they do have in the chat, I believe, so it will be meeting. Committee reporter, building, ground, parts, health and safety, Alderman Percy, Alderman Van Dyne.
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, November 9th, 2016, at 5:30 PM.
Our source, Christian Harris, committee, Alderman Tudor, Alderman Kerwin.
Mr. Mayor, I scheduled to meet at Wednesday, November 9th, about 16:00 to 6:00 PM.
Listen, ask Alderman Tudor, Alderman Tudor.
I move to approve the unearned governmental agreement between Will County 911 Emergency Telephone System Board and the city for the funding of a 911 surcharge reallocation.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second. Second, Alderman Percy, any discussion?
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor. A B S motion passes.
Next scheduled meeting is Thursday, November 10th, at 5:30.
My name is Administration of Land Acquisition, Alderman Tudor, Alderman Tudor.
I move to approve the accounts payable report in the amount of $339,904.61 in the September 30th, 2016 collector's report in the amount of $373,437.95 as presented by the city account.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second. Second, Alderman Evans, any discussion? Rokalvold.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
A B S motion passes.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Illinois Department of Transportation and the city of Wilmington for improvements to North Waters Street and North Kansas Key Street, and to authorize the mayor to execute and the city clerk to attest the memorandum of understanding in the form and substance not materially different than that attached here too. Contingent on attachment, a amendment for a city engineer including scope award on First Street.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second. Second, Alderman Kirby Hall, any discussion? Rokalvold.
Alderman Tudor, yes. Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
A B S motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number 16-10-18-01, an ordinance directing the sale of Wilmington, city of Wilmington police station at 120 North Main Street bearing parcel number 03-17-25-323-013-0000, and adjoining lots to the West bearing parcel numbers 03-17-25-323-011-0000 and 03-17-25-323-012-0000.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second.
Somebody upset.
Any discussion? Rokalvold.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
A B S motion passes.
I have number four on hold.
Number four is on hold.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve to waive the competitive bidding for local ordinance for JR Gas Construction Incorporated to complete the Willows Road Storm Water Replacement Project.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Rokalvold.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
A B S motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve vote submitted by JR Gas Construction Incorporated for Willows Road Storm Water Replacement Project in the amount not to exceed $28,200.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second. Second. Second, Alderman Van Dyne. Any discussion? Rokalvold.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor. I'm sorry, Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
A B S motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the reputation for our water storage tank repairs not to exceed $98,000.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Rokalvold.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor, yes. Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
A B S motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Bozo contract agreement for technical services for the water storage tank project by Dixon Engineering not to exceed $4,000.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second. Second, Alderman Evans, any discussion? Rokalvold, please.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
A B S motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the 14th Amendment to the redevelopment agreement by and among the city of Wilmington, a Dacquero-Wedgeport Industrial Partners LLC, a Whole Food Processing Company.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Rokalvold, please.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
A B S motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve fiscal year 2016 audit presented by Man and Associates.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Yeah, just for the, for the record too, we're accepting this, this audit, and it will be placed on file and recorded with the county.
As well as the annual treasures report, so it will be filed with the county, we're going to do that by the end of this month.
All right, further discussion? Rokalvold, please.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
A B S motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I scheduled meetings Tuesday, November 15th, until August 16th, at 6:00 PM.
All right, ordinance license pending, Alderman Kirby Hall, Alderman Evans.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have all. Ordinance, approve ordinance number 16-10-18-02, an ordinance amending provisions of Chapter 12, the provision for a craft beer and wine license.
Motion by Alderman Evans, we have a second. Second. Second, Alderman Kirby Hall, any discussion? Rokalvold, please.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
A B S motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 16-10-18-03, an ordinance amending provision of Chapter 90 related to prohibited animals.
Motion by Alderman Kirby Hall, we have a second.
Second. Second, Alderman Evans, discussion? Just let me make, I wanted to do two things. First thing to make note of is that committee level that did not really pass its majority was tuned to, so the council have knowledge on that. What I really want to do is have Mr. Urban kind of explain why the wording was changed, whether it reflects what it was and why we put the change in there.
The, uh, this section has, the first part says that it's unlawful to keep any animal other than those that are customarily used as pets, unless you get a certification from a licensed veterinarian that the animal is safe, and if it's subject to getting rabies, then it has a rabies shot. And then below that, there's a section that says, "Any person seeking to keep any animal not otherwise permitted under this chapter in regards to prohibited animals, then you have to go through a variance procedure. They have to send notice to your neighbors within 250 feet, and if anyone objects to it, then there has to be approval by the city council by a two-thirds vote." But in any event, there is a, there's a little bit of inconsistency here. You could read it as meaning that you don't have to go through the various procedure if you only have two animals and the licensed veterinarian says it's safe. So, by adding in that one sentence, you also now require not only, you have to go through the various procedure as well. So, the way it was read before, you could interpret it either way, that it wanted to keep two animals not otherwise customarily used as pets. You would either have to get it certified in writing by the veterinarian, in which case then be okay to keep, or you had to go through the various procedure. So, it was a little bit unclear, and what this does is make it clear that you have to go through the various procedure.
You gotta help everybody. It also went by direction, I know typically on ordinance changes, we do go through through readings, this was requested to go straight to final approval, so that's where we're at. But I think in relation to all this sentence does is really kind of make it legally more defensible by adding this sentence, to get rid of the confusion.
Correct. Because you can interpret it either way.
Right, so, I mean, the way it's written now, if somebody was to be, let's say, go to court or go to whatever, do a case in regards to this, there's enough in there to kind of confuse the situation, and what this does is kind of takes away that confusion by adding this sentence.
Correct.
All right, any further discussion? That's, the only change is?
That's just, that's it. That's it. That's all it does.
Rokalvold, please.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
We have A B S motion passes.
And it's scheduled meeting is Thursday, Wilmington, November 6th, 6:00 PM.
Personnel collecting bargaining, Alderman Hall, Alderman Percy.
We have executive session tonight for matters of personnel and collective bargaining and land acreage.
All right, yes. City engineer support, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. High-speed rail projects, as we discussed, the Cape to Key Street, Chicago Street, First Street, MOUs, I'll make those modifications tomorrow, I'll get that sent back. Strip mine at 53, Polled City Road at 53, currently in an updated schedule from the contractor out there and the potential soldiers provide out in deconstruction on those two roadways, I have not heard anything back from them yet, but still waiting to hear back, the YD report with those projects. I bet if something happens soon, I'm gonna try and get them to take some of those signs down, they had that road construction sign there, warn everybody for some time, and base far beyond it, you know, today, so I'll try and reach out to them. 53 and South Arsenal, waiting for Austin Tyler to get their schedule updated as well to begin work, but expect something to happen out there before, right around the first November.
We see the voucher on it, I mean, so the check should be here any day now for 2.3, almost 2.3 billion dollars for this project.
P20 53, files available, bid to the state, the bid opening is scheduled for November 9th, so the process is out there for private.
It's a spring project.
Yeah, we'll open the bids this, this, in November, but you'll probably.
Are they gonna fix the potholes over the winter?
Well, that's, I think, something where we have to, we have to really stay on county on that, that's a county side.
I'll keep talking to Eric, Austin, you know, try and.
I'm just saying, if we're gonna go through the whole winter, we definitely need to have that tightened up.
Well, do is we'll send out a memo from the city asking if they'll do a more permanent repair for the winter time, and do so. Yeah, I know, I know one of their issues was, they didn't want to do anything until they knew if this project was doing poorly or not. Now, now, I think by us getting the bid out, I think they always told us, that was one of the reasons why, why we need some permanent repairs, because they need something that can't rip it all off, so now they, well, we'll send something to them.
Just don't throw a bunch of gravel in the hole, you know, and let it go.
I'm sure they're not going to work for it, but Gary and the guys will take care of it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
of concrete pavements being poured for the entrance to that property coming out the design road, and, uh, storm sewer replacement, uh, eliminates a lot of storm swells along, uh, the east side of the transload facility out there. You, uh, figure right out there, it needs to be a big swell.
They're looking at the operational, second of November.
Yeah, they're looking at the temporary theater, and these, uh, south end of the building started using it for operational.
Yeah, the rackings about completed, the south end, they still have to pour the Florida north end, and then they're, they're erecting a freezer cooler in the, uh, north end also.
And they have a job trip to library this Thursday.
Yeah, they're very, very aggressive, I actually have a chance to talk to their operations manager, Jessica, uh, last weekend, she was down there for the event, uh, the, the deployments has gone very well, so.
Uh, Michelin expansion, uh, same thing there, a lot of pavement being poured, uh, parking lot. Uh, block easement, uh, coordinate everything with the BNSF to, uh, confirm their alignment and sizing of the storm sewer out there, um, I'll be with Dave from Haynes Associates, uh, by the end of this week, whatever, with his, uh, preliminary design, uh, layout and sizing of, uh, that project, um, that'll be a spring project, uh, once, uh, once everything gets rolling, but he's, he's still waiting for the corner to come down, so he can get some more, uh, survey shots to get his site, his design confirmed, uh, project line and everything goes, so he's kind of working out stuff from Manhard, um, that, that crap's been out there, he'll be able to get out there and get, uh, get the survey stuff he needs, but, uh, building them, a lot of ashtrays you see going out there, uh, who look there.
Actually called General Mills. Or they actually say it, General Mills. Nice.
As far as the, the plan review, uh, actually, review number two last week, and, uh, I just finalized the sewer and water realignment for, uh, that project out there, so, uh, project Charlie, uh, going in front of P and Z, uh, on Thursday, so, uh.
I suspect building credit.
Correct.
It's a spec building that's under an R O D right now, we're gonna, uh, set out all the documents again, we're on the shortlist. Okay, get a building built, spec building built.
Well, the possibility that spec building might be added on.
That's all we get that, yeah. That's all they have, project approval, as soon as they get that, figure out that.
Yep. Yeah. And, uh, cocktail comments, I was out there speaking with Leo this morning about getting Dee out there to get that road done, uh, he said he's spoken with him, and, uh, I also got an email from Jeff Fisher, you know, basically saying the same thing, in the next couple weeks, if everything's been coordinated, Dee's just gonna, he didn't have, he never scheduled it without there.
He's still working to spread out that bid file.
Right now, they're, they're actually selling it, selling it like, or Leo told me, he goes, they're running out of sites, they're actually selling it, so it's, uh, a little bit slow, but he's, he's gonna, I hope he can pick up a little.
When picked up and done.
That's their plan. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you.
City engineer support, Mr. Grab.
I'm gonna throw a question over to Kobe, because I think they're really getting some inquiries in on, on Stevens Lane, on gravel out there, uh, Kobe's been working with township along with, uh, a couple of contractors in the area to get some grindings, um, so, we're gonna start with the grindings at Strip Mine Road first, and take that up carefully, and then go up, go all the way up to Stevens, and then we have about, oh, maybe three quarters of a mile, maybe, three thousand feet, up Stevens.
Up Stevens, yeah.
So, as soon as the grindings get all used, um, from these couple of contracts that are coming in, we've got worried out for some more grindings, in case we need it, so we're gonna try to get grindings down on Stevens Lane before the winter hits, and then the plan is for, once the grindings are in, um, then we'll have to take our new, our new, uh, sort of weed whacker, the big machine out there, we wanna cut away as much as we can from the, from this, from the area, uh, one, what, what sun would be beat down on those grindings, so we're gonna have to take down some of the scrub trees that are out there, and also help with the drainage, and I know there's been some inquiries, um, that we wanted to know how we'll work on it, but you'll see some work possibly starting in two weeks with the grindings, with township.
Probably be all out there, you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably the next couple of weeks, I mean, probably by next week, they'll start seeing some out the, uh, gun range.
And then, we got grindings going to gun range for putting grindings down there for, for the parking area and approach areas, uh, because local one fifty did a great job out there, now they wanna put some hard surface down, um, so that they could, or vehicles bank in there, and possibly could use it, uh, while you, while we fish, we got, let's see if, um, go on, open ankles. Let's count, yeah. So, uh, the other thing, uh, under administration's report, I know on the last couple of meetings you can see Agent C map coming up, uh, we'll be able to give you more of an update. What basically has happened with C map is, there's two different, uh, applications I've filled out with C map, one was to do, uh, as we talked before, about a corridor study with one oh two and fifty-three in our downtown area, uh, we were awarded that, uh, they're gonna provide us technical assistance, uh, there is a cost to that, because they bring down planners that we don't have to pay for, and then they have focus group meetings, uh, stakeholder meetings, and ultimately, it'll be an intergovernmental agreement, we gotta sign with them, uh, the cost for this wasn't budgeted, so I asked them to put it in next year's budget, so our payment isn't for, for five thousand dollars, it's until, due until May, um, good thing about this project, it's, uh, the outline is from Fort Court to First, First is where we're gonna study, and what they're mainly gonna be studying is land use, uh, possibly looking at, as we've talked before, about different uses on fifty-three, maybe some of the houses wanna be businesses, or possibly some other, other type of use, uh, and then, so I talk about some maybe street scape and other planning enhancements that will help with calming, um, traffic, and discouraging that route to be a major truck route, so there's some ideas that, uh, they're gonna explore with that, and plus we'll have a lot of meetings with the community, uh, talking about it. So we coordinate with C map and our planners and our, and our staff too, so I think that's gonna be a good thing, the other thing that's positive about it is, since C map was, uh, through a lot of comments, we always heard through the Indiana, that we're downstate, now we're ready to get C map, uh, personnel down here, getting, you know, what we can, uh, plus use their services. Part of this, since you get, this is a precursor to maybe go get some grants, and one of the grants that we've been trying to get before on one fifty-three is called the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Grant, ITTIP. ITTIps are for sidewalk improvements, facades, streetlights, street sakes, and since we really don't have a plan or a corridor, uh, designed, uh, we never, the last one we, we applied for, when I called the reviewers, um, we didn't even qualify with more than like four or five points, uh, and needed to score at least thirty points to be out there. So, I think this is gonna be great for us, we'll bring the intergovernmental agreement to you if it's made, uh, and say our application could be ten thousand dollars for this, uh, if you debate, you know, when we have a project. The other, the other grant they were looking at is, they're coming in and they want us to participate in what they call climate change, uh, and we've, we've been picked as one of the kind of programs, um, this is mainly to do with, uh, the unusual weather activity that's been happening, um, in the area, how it impacts our waterways, our quality of water in the river, uh, also our flooding, stormwater issues, so we were chosen as one of the six communities in, uh, to be part of this, uh, program, and there's no, no cost to us, it's just that they're gonna come out and they're gonna be, uh, doing some assessments, some inventory, um, some public discussion, and then this whole group is gonna be doing, sorry about, uh, scientific analysis, and, and they're gonna tell us that it's climate change, but they're gonna tell us that when the, uh, water, um, issues happen because of the climate, uh, we gotta start addressing it, and they'll come back with some, there's gonna be some good analysis that how is this impacting our, our river, and with our water quality, I think it's gonna be great, uh, and this is another precursor that we could maybe use this as a water quality issue, uh, we could also use this possibly, possibly, uh, with our mill rates and everything else, that this is another reason for us to put evidence that we're having these, uh, you know, water flows coming in to our community from the Indiana area and other places, how it's impacting our, you know, our, our, basically our river and our, and our structures all around, structures mean dams, so, we're just trying to keep building a case of getting everybody's attention, and then sometimes it gets us funding. I think that's a good thing, you can see map down here, they wanna know a little bit more about the impacts of logistics and everything else here, so tomorrow, um, the University of Illinois Chicago, I partnered up with them, uh, we're gonna be having students come down, they're gonna be touring our community, uh, this first tour is gonna be about, basically, the history of what we can, and that's where they start with that, is the downtown area, I said, so they're coming here, uh, I know thirty-minute presentation as we get the students, and then they do a walk-in tour of downtown area, and they're gonna be doing lunch, um, either, some of them are going to Nellie, some of them are going to Haynes, and, and it'd be great if we start working with, um, University of Illinois Chicago's, uh, urban planning area, and possibilities, we make another intern or some other paper like we had with, uh, Chris Vance, Francis came in and did that study in our downtown area, so we're starting to partner up with some of the universities, and we're gonna plan for our, our community, and if, uh, plus a good student's around here, they, they can see that, they got the box. Uh, nothing else, I'm gonna, anything else going on? Um, do we have to request, uh, approval to allow me to sign, uh, Venice Engineering is one of, is one of the team members we get in here, in regards to the master plan and everything else on, uh, IP five and the Ridgeport Logistics Area, um, so it's, it's basically a timely material consulting service agreement, it's in your package, to authorize them to be our, our consultants, uh, this is a pass through, uh, so all the work that they'll be conducting out there in reference to the one twenty-nine interchange and Lorenzo interchange, uh, the impact, and trying to get the IDON's attention, good action, so request a motion to authorize, authorize me to be able to sign this, uh, agreement, um, and say it will be, uh, the services will come through in the past, and we'll be reimbursed.
Do we have, uh, do we have a guy, uh, unit out there now, shoots or something?
Well, shopping is land planning, that's on that.
Okay, and they're not affiliated with us?
Well, they're part, they're, they're the coordinators for studies out there, millennials, but we need to bring in these engineers in regards to IP five.
Representative Christian Bennett was here. When the Eliana project, we did the early phases, he did a lot of the engineering, scope for that stuff, so the road, so he's got that knowledge, uh, that's why, I mean, not only do so much from, from the city's standpoint, but also from, uh, the Ridgeport standpoint, it's the best, it's, it's, first with both, with, with us and them, and that's why it's a pass. So you really don't ask the city, uh, we'll get the check, and then.
And, and I want us to hire, not, not the developer, I want them to be city-driven, um, in regards to what we want them to do, and focus on it too, so, in regards to, especially the transportation out there and, and, uh.
Jim, is this gonna be one of my great checks?
Um, no. That'll be the regular general corporate.
The great one is where we get money back.
Well, I meant to say, yeah.
Yeah. That's what I was asking.
Can I get a, get a motion to authorize, uh, city administrator to sign the consulting service agreement without permission?
I'll make it.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second. Second by Alderman Kirby Hall, uh, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm not too, uh, easy with this, including potentially a future in my, in the Indiana Expressway, you get a, a numerous problems with that, and, uh, it's been changed so many times, it's definitely impacting a lot of the first order, if it wants to go in.
I think, uh, even though all indications are that it's pretty much dead, um, that ROB is out there, the record of decision is out there, I think that just protects us, I mean, I think that does happen, um, I don't think it's gonna happen from all indications, it's not really, um, it's just better for, for what can be used down the road, so, especially if we need that type of data as well.
Any other discussion? Uh, do a roll call, do a roll call vote please.
Absolutely. Um, Alderman, Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Now you have there, Mr. Grab, yes, all here. Area support, Mr. Urban.
Thank you. The, uh, since the last meeting, I attended a couple of committee meetings, and also,